Good evening, welcome to the June 11th Lake Mills Board Meeting. Our mission statement is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Verification of meeting notice?
We submitted the agenda to the Lake Mills leader and it was posted at the Lake Mills Library Post Office in Bank of Lake Mills on June 1st. It was also posted on the website. On June 6th, we realized we needed to add it to closed session and at that time we reposted.
Could we have the pledge allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Can we have roll call, please?
Don Delaney?
Here.
Rachel Davies?
Robert DiPiero?
Here.
David Rado?
Here.
Richard Mason?
Any agenda revisions or approval?
I move approval of the agenda as printed.
Second?
Would you second approve the agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the agenda is passed. Do we have any community input? No? Alright, saying none. Okay, Blaze, I'm gonna have you come up here.
Alright.
Mr. Frost isn't here. I don't know which way we're looking. I guess. So, every year, we have a representative from the student body of the high school that sits in the board meetings. And this year, Blaze has been our representative. And it's my pleasure to present to him a plaque for all his hard work and attending all these meetings. It says, "Blaze Knappel, in appreciation for your dedicated service to the Lake Mills Area School District Board of Education, 2017-18, presented June 11, 2018." So, congratulations. And now, before I give it to you, you gotta say something. First of all- What did you learn from this whole experience?
Well, first of all, it's a beautiful plaque that I've received. So, I'm very grateful for that. And I couldn't have learned more through my experience at Lake Mills Area School District.
Good. Congratulations. Here you go. Did you get that?
Let's get out.
Uh, Dr. Delaney, correspondence?
We had one item. It was a thank you note from Diane McFarlane in appreciation for the retirement gift received from the district. In her note, Diane noted, "It's been a pleasure to work for the Lake Mills Area School District. This is a wonderful place to be."
Good. That's all?
That was it.
Thank you. Mr. DiPiero, Facility Committee?
Just wanted to report that the survey process for our long-range facility plan and specific projects is still ongoing. To date, we've received more than 700 responses, which is really great. There is still time. The surveys are due on the 18th of June, after which time the board will have an opportunity to review the results and plan any appropriate action for the future. So, we're very thankful that people have responded in the way that they have and are looking forward to seeing those results.
Alright, thank you. Okay, the Policy Committee met a couple weeks ago and what you see is a rather lengthy group of policies that need to be revised. And basically, we have a group that does that for us, which is really helpful because if something gets changed at the beginning of a policy or a group of policies, it's changed throughout the policies. And we don't have to go through them piece by piece by piece. So, what prompted this change in many of the policies is a court, Supreme Court decision by the State Supreme Court for Appleton. And basically, they said, if the superintendent appoints a committee to do some kind of work-
Of the board.
Or the board appoints a committee to do some kind of work for them. It could be in any area. It has to follow the open meetings law. So, that means that we had to do a few changes on some of them, and that's what you're seeing in those, if you had a chance to read it. This'll be the first reading and then we'll have the second reading next month. So, with that, if there's any questions or anything, they're pretty standard, pretty straightforward. Changes are minor. So, administrative reports. Ms. Brown?
Just a couple of things. I first would like to thank the special education staff for supporting our students and families this year and for bearing with me as I learned through my first year as well in this position. Some focuses this summer, we'll be continuing to solidify our special education processes. This week, we will be holding a professional book study with about six or seven staff members. And then, this summer, I'll be attending conferences on social-emotional competencies, DBT in schools, mental health, first aid. And then, with Andrea Phillipsen, this summer, we'll be attending two conferences together. One is managing to lead, and then the other one will be seeds, which is the program that manages our IEP's system. Any questions?
Questions from anybody? Okay, thank you. Ms. Silverd?
Good evening. As part of your board packet, you've got a couple different handouts on human growth and development. And this was part of our curriculum sequence this year. The state law used to be that every three years, if you taught human growth and development, you had to have a committee meeting appointed by the board to review the human growth and development scope and sequence. The state law changed and now you have to follow the same number of years that you do for any other curriculum cycle. So, this year, we did physical education and health, and then we did human growth and development as part of that. The only difference, the only reason that this one wasn't presented then is you still have to have that community meeting, where you have to include community members, members of the clergy, members of the health community, and we held that meeting last week. And we had members represent, members from the Lake Mills community represent all of those areas at the meeting and go over the scope and sequence. So, I wanted to present that to you tonight. We teach human growth and development specifically in 4th grade, 5th grade, 7th grade health class, and 9th grade health class. And the kids are separated by males and females and taught their separate classes as age-appropriate. So, that's included in your handouts there. Other things I want to call your attention to, summer school starts next Monday. We are looking forward to a lot of fun learning opportunities for the kids and for the staff. And this last month, I've spent a lot of time in data meetings with teachers, and we've been looking at the data, whether we've grown or not grown. And I really want to call attention to the 2nd, 3rd, and 4th grade staff. They have done a lot. Their data grew tremendously this year, especially the 2nd grade. They took their data at the beginning of the year, their first data meeting, and they looked at their math data and they were like, "We are not, this is not acceptable to us." And so, they brought kids in, they identified kids and invited them to be in part of the math club at 7:45 in the morning before school started every day. And they got their data, like, so far in the green, they're considered green if they're on target, that it was remarkable. And I just want to say congratulations to them for that hard work. And then, to see the data come out and show that their hard work was worth it was really awesome for them. But a lot of the data at the elementary school especially was, is definitely going in the right direction. So, that's a really good thing. We're really happy to see that.
Good.
Any questions?
Great. Questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Vogel?
Good evening. We made it through graduation and end of the year. It was pretty hectic in the last several weeks of the high school. Congrats and a special thanks to our senior advisors for organizing graduation. Just to say, our high school office hours here at the high school during the summer, 7:30 to 3:00, Monday through Friday. Some things we have going on for teacher professional development this summer, a number of things. We have a couple AP teachers going to the AP Institute at UW-Madison, which is a week-long course. We also have our staff, our leadership team got trained with our ACT method test prep program we're gonna introduce in the fall. The rest of our staff will get that training in August. Music teachers, several of them going to music standards-based music workshop. Social studies, English, world language, and music are also gonna do curriculum work this summer. And our soon-to-be, hopefully, our new English teacher will be doing some dual credit training soon. Want to give a congratulations to Renee Mitchell and Yearbook for, I think, the third year in a row, the Johnson's National Yearbook Program of Excellence for their work for the yearbook. And a special congratulations to Ms. Linda Heimstreet for last night at the Overture's Jerry Awards, being named to the Hall of Fame and for her work with musicals. And I believe she's the only 8th music professional to be named to the Hall of Fame. So, congrats to Linda. She does an amazing job.
Yes. Question? Great.
That's all I have.
Questions? Questions? Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Bauer?
Tonight, I'd like to dedicate my time to thanking a bunch of different people who have helped us throughout the school year. First of all, I want to start with all the people that volunteered their time and donations to address the variety of needs of our students. Our Inspire Program, you'll have several thank yous or several donations tonight from the Inspire Program, different individuals and groups who've donated money to some of our students who are doing innovative work. We have, I still have students working on, they're calling it a green tree room, a meditation room in the middle school. And then, our other Inspire Group who is working on a mental health app. So, they're using their donations to work on those things. I also, I have to give a big thank you out to Second Harvest and Kathy Hansen. On average, we had about 500 visits a month to our community store. And Kathy regularly delivered and made the orders with Second Harvest for us and bought food when she could and different things from the food pantry. So, a big thanks to them. I also want to thank Ashley Stewart. She has submitted her resignation for creating such a container of trust and care at the middle school. We're gonna dearly miss her. Interviews for that will be later this week. I also want to thank teachers who put in all their extra hours and gave pieces of their heart to the students this year. The parents who inevitably drop stuff off all day long for their students, for volunteering in the classroom and all the smiles and thank yous that they gave us. I want to give them a round of applause. And then, students, in particular this 8th grade class, who I'm very excited to send to the high school. It was a very touching ceremony for me because I've worked so closely with so many of those 8th graders. But I want to thank them for their effort and their growth and their gratitude. Just one last note, our office hours this summer will be 7:00 to 2:30 at the middle school.
Thank you. If you want to take Amanda's?
No, she can do it.
Wendy's? Okay.
Just real briefly, I am amazed. I've been here, back here full-time, like, a little more than 13 months, and I, like everyone else, I appreciate the support the business office has provided. I think we've grown a lot over the last 13 months and we've accomplished a lot, and I appreciate it. The business office is really kicking into high gear right now because we are trying to close up our books that end June 30th. We have our auditors here this week, and again, later in the month of July, we have an annual meeting to get ready for, so we're staying very active and busy and having a little fun, too.
You're having fun?
A little.
Numbers are fun. Numbers are fun.
A little fun is okay. No, do you want to take-
Yeah, I can read Amanda's.
Mrs. Thompson's?
Mrs. Thompson couldn't be here this evening, but she submitted a report that I'll read to you. "Our staff did an amazing job coming together the last few weeks as we helped our school community cope with the loss of Jordan Grossman. Everyone went above and beyond to lend a hand in covering classes, recesses, and lunch, helping students that needed time to talk, and reaching out to one another as we found comfort walking through this tragedy together. The summer office hours for the elementary school are 8 o'clock to 12 o'clock and then 1 o'clock to 3 o'clock, Monday through Friday." And finally, she describes all of the learning opportunities for staff this summer. "We have many learning opportunities. We will start next week by sending a group of teachers to culturally responsive classrooms in Brown Deer. There's a book study on Lost at School by Ross Green and Ed Climer Training. We have two teachers that are going to Columbia University Teachers College Reading and Writing Project in August. Teachers will be trained in Ready Math this August, and our Lit Action Team will be working on refining our wordwork and phonics instruction for the coming year. We're also sending 11 teachers to PBIS Leadership Conference to refresh and recharge our PBIS program at the elementary school. This will be the spotlight of focus for our next school year." So, a tremendous amount of staff development going on this summer. And she didn't mention this, but I will. We also received notification that the elementary school received a PBIS award at the bronze level. So, congratulations to them.
Okay. Mrs. Strick?
Oh, now you've slowed me down, too. I can't.
I lost mine, too. I don't know how.
Okay. Okay. I wanted to remind anyone who's listening tonight that there is a two-step process in having your child come to our school. First, there's enrollment, and that's done at our district office with Roseanne Punsle. Once enrollment is complete, we have a registration process, and that is August 1st through August 17th. That's an online process, and all families in our school district must complete that online registration. I know families are already planning vacations and lots of days, so I wanted to announce that Picture Days are Tuesday, August 7th, and Thursday, August 16th, from 2:00 to 7:00 at the elementary school. And already looking into August, our New Teacher Days will be August 23rd and 24th, and all staff returns on August 27th. Students will return on Tuesday, August 4th. I wanted to congratulate Megan Larrabee. She's been elected to the CISA II, as the CISA II East Representative to WASA, which is Wisconsin Association of Schools Superintendent Assistance. And I just think this is really a great honor, as she's only going into her third year in this role. And to be voted on by her peers already is quite an accomplishment. We also have a Recreation Director's Report, and that's attached. I'm not able to access that right now to summarize it for you, but Ben's complete report is there as well.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you. Okay, so, we're gonna go on to action items. So, quickly, we can do this. Can we try to take the three? I don't think there's any abstentions or any problems, so I think let's do the approval of the May 14th Regular Board of Education meeting, the Finance Committee proceedings from May 14th, and approval of the Policy Committee meeting.
I move approval of the May 14th, 2018 Regular Board of Education meeting minutes, the May 14th, 2018 Finance Committee proceedings, and the May 31st, 2018 Policy Committee proceedings.
I'll second.
Second. Second by Dr. Delaney. We'll do that on a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Good, that passes. Approval of Treasurers' Report. Vouchers and invoices first, and then the Treasurers' Report.
I move the board approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $1,475,271.34 for the month of May 2018.
Second.
Would you second to approve the vouchers and invoices? Could we have a roll call on that, please?
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Robert DiPiero?
Aye.
David Rado?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Approval of the Treasurers' Report.
I move the board approve the Treasurers' Report for the month of May 2018.
Second.
Would you second to approve the Treasurers' Report? Roll call on that, please.
David Rado?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Robert DiPiero?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. That passes unanimously. Approval of other post-employment benefit trust revision.
Should I take that?
Yep.
Currently, we have a post-employment benefit trust, and it covers just insurance benefits for retirees. And what I'd like to do, since we've expanded our post-retirement benefits to include tax shelter annuities or 403Bs, I'd like to expand our trust to also include that. And that way, we can have funds run through the trust. And there's a couple advantages for that. One is being able to put aside some money for future planning for retirees. And the other piece is there's an accounting advantage to running it through the trust because then we can show our expenses in the special ed fund as well as the general fund, and we can receive some additional aid by doing that accounting process. So, I met with an attorney through Quarles &amp; Brady, who's the same firm that set up our original trust fund documents. And the documents attached in the agenda are, were prepared by that firm, law firm. So, I ask your approval of expanding our trust to include the 403Bs, tax shelter annuities benefits.
You have a motion, please?
I'll move the board approve the resolution authorizing creation of a post-employment TSA benefits trust.
Second.
Would you second it? Any questions or comments on that? Anyone? Roll call, please?
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Robert DiPiero?
Aye.
David Rado?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Approval of CISA II Board of Control nomination.
Okay, so, we belong to CISA II, and our region is supposed to have a representative on the Board of Control. Dr. Delaney serves as our representative to, our representative to that group, and they are looking for one representative from that group to then serve on the Board of Control for the, for the whole entire CISA area. Dr. Mason, his name has come forward as a potential candidate for that, but because he's not our delegate, they, CISA II is asking that we, excuse me, you as a board nominate him so that he can be considered for that.
I move to nominate Dr. Richard Mason for the CISA II Board of Control.
Second.
Comments? I'll abstain from this vote. This is, this is kind of interesting because we haven't had a representative for a number of years in our group. And the group is comprised of about five or six districts. So, roll call, please.
Robert DiPiero?
Aye.
David Rado?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
I'll abstain, and that passes three to one abstention. Okay. Next one is approval of the R-LAC lease for the 2018-19 school year.
I move that the-
Can I tell you something?
That the item be tabled.
Okay.
Okay, we're tabling this?
He moved to table it.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved and, do you want to say any comment on that at all or not?
Since we prepared this agreement, some additional information has come to light that I'd like to research a little bit more to make sure that that's the right fit for us.
Okay, so, the motion is to table it for now. Roll call, please.
David Rado?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Robert DiPiero?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of salary increases for staff other than professional teaching staff for the 2018-19 school year.
So, based on your recommendations and the work for the last several months in the Finance Committee, we have prepared salary and wage increases for all of our different employment groups other than the teachers that represent a 2.13 increase, which is the computer, consumer price index. I wanted to note that the bus drivers and the custodians percentage is actually a bit higher, and those are because we've restructured how each of those groups will be paid.
No, I'll take a motion.
I move the board approve the presented wage increases for all employees except professional teaching staff for the 2018-2019 school year.
It's moved and seconded to approve the increase. Questions, comments on that? Anyone? Okay, roll call, please.
Robert DiPiero?
Aye.
David Rado?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Abstain.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes three to one abstention. Alright. Approval of Lake Mills School Student Handbook, Lake Mills High School Student Handbook for the 2018-19 school year.
This handbook was presented to you last month for the first reading. They have removed the section that lists the school closing stations, TV and radio stations, until we get that clarified through surveying parents.
Motion, please?
I'll move the board approve the Lake Mills High School Handbook for the 2018-19 school year.
Second.
Would you second to approve the Lake Mills Handbook, High School Handbook? Questions or comments on that? We've had a chance to look at it. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Robert DiPiero?
Aye.
David Rado?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Approval of 66.0301 Agreement with Johnson Creek School District for Alternative Education Programming for the 2018-19 school year.
As you know, this has been a very successful program for us, this alternative school option, and we enjoy that partnership with Johnson's Creek.
Motion, please?
I move the board approve the 66.0301 Agreement with Johnson Creek School District for Alternative Education Programming, the CAP program for the 2018-2019 school year.
Second.
Second. Would you second it? Any questions or comments on that? Roll call, please.
Robert DiPiero?
Aye.
David Rado?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Approval of 66.0301 Agreement with Johnson Creek School District for Early Childhood Education Programming for the 2018-19 school year.
Although we continue to expand partnerships with, here within Lake Mills for our students in early childhood, we do want to keep the door open in case any students need to attend a classroom setting. And we've worked with Johnson's Creek for many, many years now in this capacity.
I move the board approve the 66.0301 Agreement with the Johnson Creek School District for Early Childhood Education Programming for the 2018-19 school year.
Second.
Would you second to approve the agreement with Johnson Creek for early childhood? Any comments on that or questions? Roll call, please.
David Rado?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Robert DiPiero?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Approval of professional staff resignations.
Unfortunately, we have two this month- Unfortunately, we have two this month, and the first is from Ashley Stewart. She's the school counselor at the middle school, and I'd just like to read her letter very quickly. "Please accept this letter of resignation from Lake Mills Area School District as the middle school counselor. I plan to not resume my position for the 2018-19 school year as I have accepted a position within the Fort Atkinson School District. This decision to move districts has been one of the most difficult choices that I have made. The sole reason is that the community of Fort Atkinson is where my family resides, and my children will be entering their school system in the near future. After much deliberation, this decision was made for the betterment of my family, betterment and well-being of my family. The Lake Mills Area School District has been part of my identity for the last eight years. It has given me an opportunity to serve in this dynamic and progressive learning community in many capacities. The leadership provided by our administrators, our eager and caring teaching staff, along with our diverse and curious student body, has led me to grow personally and professionally. This district has been impressive in setting and achieving high standards, and I am thankful to have been part of that. Thank you once again for supporting and trusting me in this crucial, crucial role while serving our youth. I am confident that our paths will cross again in some way. Until next time, I'll get pride." And then we also have a resignation from a new teacher that we offered a contract to who has decided not to enter the educational field this fall. It's Mr. Alex Krogan.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve the professional staff resignation of Ms. Ashley Stewart, and thank her for her dedication to the students, families, and community of the Lake Mills Area School District. In addition, I move the board approve the professional staff resignation of Mr. Alex Krogan.
Second.
Moving seconded to approve staff resignations. Any questions from anyone? Comments? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Robert DiPiero?
Aye.
David Rado?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Approval of co-curricular resignations.
We have several coaching resignations. The list is provided there for you.
We have a motion, please.
I move the board approve the following co-curricular resignations, and thank them for their dedication to the students of the Lake Mills Area School District. Ms. Katie Burton, JV girls basketball coach, Mr. Tim Borkert, eighth-grade girls volleyball coach, Mr. Jim Hollenberger, assistant football and track and field coach, Mr. Steve Murphy, sixth-grade boys basketball and JV boys baseball coach.
Second.
Moving seconded. Questions, comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Robert DiPiero?
Aye.
David Rado?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Approval of support staff resignation.
We have two in this area as well. Ms. Jessica Laws, she's been a special education paraeducator for us intermittently through the last couple of years. And then Mr. Bill Buck is a bus driver. He will be moving to Texas.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve the following support staff resignations, and thank them for their service to the students of the Lake Mills Area School District. Ms. Jessica Laws, special education paraeducator, and Mr. William Buck, bus driver.
Second.
Moving seconded to approve the support staff resignations. Questions on that? Any? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Robert DiPiero?
Aye.
David Rado?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Approval of professional staff contracts.
We have two outstanding candidates for you this evening. First of all is Melinda, or as we know, Mindy Oats, who's here with us this evening, as a new high school English teacher. She's been a student teacher here and just has really fit in well with our English department. And then also Ms. Colby Shoemaker, and she will join us as our high school counselor.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve the following professional staff contracts for the 2018-19 school year, and welcome them to the Lake Mills Area School District, Ms. Melinda Oats, high school English teacher, and Ms. Colby Shoemaker, Shoemaker, high school counselor.
Second.
Moving seconded. Any questions, comments? Last chance at Mindy. Okay, roll call, please.
Robert DiPiero?
Aye.
David Rado?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Congratulations. Welcome aboard. All right. Approval of support staff letter of assignment.
We have a candidate for our head cook position at the elementary school, Ms. Susan Renhak.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve the head cook letter of assignment to Ms. Susan Renhak, and welcome her to the Lake Mills Area School District.
Second.
Moving seconded. Any questions or comments on that? Roll call, please.
David Rado?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Robert DiPiero?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Future Board of General Items.
As you recall, we have a June 26 special meeting. It'll be a more of a workshop kind of meeting. And Bill Foster from School Perceptions will be there. He will be sharing with us the results of the facility survey. So we're anxious to hear his presentation. At that time, too, Wendy will have information about the 2018-19 budget. Then, on July 9, which is our regular meeting, we will approve curriculum. We need to do that each year in July. Wendy will present previous year budget adjustments, and by that time, we hope to have several employee handbook updates for you.
Any other additions or anything else that we need to include in the board meeting coming up? Anything we can think of?
We'll have some staffing recommendations, hopefully.
Okay. I'll take a motion to go to closed session.
I move adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Part 1, Part NE, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specific public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session.
Second.
Moving seconded to go to closed session. Could we have a roll call, please?
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Robert DiPiero?
Aye.
David Rado?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. We are now adjourned to closed session.